Want to pull the chair?
All right. Good evening, calling to order. The June 12th, 2024 meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals here in the McCallum Hearing Room. We are also available, so the meeting is also available to be viewed online through the MA Southborough Civic Plus dot com virtual meetings. On our agenda tonight, we have only the comprehensive permit and special permit with for 120 Turnpike Road. And the items specifically we want to talk about tonight, we do have peer review of the traffic study. And there's also the modification that you've made to your plans.
That's right.
And I, my opinion is we're better served starting with the modification of your plans.
We agree.
So. Laura, is that something you can pull up?
We would like the thrust of the meeting to overview the intent of the modified plan. I think.
Sorry, just formality, if you could just introduce yourself.
Louis Levine, I represent the applicant. We would like the thrust of the meeting for the board to, you know, listen to the description of the modifications to the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And we're looking for feedback as to whether or not the board is, for lack of a better word, you know, comfortable with the modification.
Right.
That it addresses the issues that have been problematic.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about drainage or things like that.
No, no, like we understand that where you are, you're, this is a proposal, you're not going to have detailed engineering plans. You know, I do think that we should, after we do this, we should have time, especially where we have our peer reviewer here on the traffic to.
Oh, sure.
To go through it, but I thought it was, made sense to start with your changes.
And I didn't realize that the traffic peer review.
Yeah.
I would agree. But in any event, there were issues that were raised in the original plan.
Mm-hmm.
That made it problematic to go forward with it.
Yep.
And Brian and George presented a plan tonight that addresses or eliminates those issues. And that's the feedback that we're looking for the board, that we've eliminated those issues. We're not looking for you to say, oh, that's a great plan, it's approved, and wait until we sign tonight. Okay? That's all.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, why don't, once we can, we do have Doug and Mike and Doris online. All right. Doris, you can, can you see that on the shared screen?
I can see it and I can expand it to answer you, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, same, same for me.
All right, great, thank you. So here's the, here's your modified plan, I'm going to leave it to you to maybe talk to what you've, what you've changed here.
Happy to. Mr. Chair and members, again, I'm Brian Charville, the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Ferris Development Group. We're here on behalf of the landowner FD 120 Turnpike LLC. So with me tonight is Attorney Levine, who's already introduced himself, and you'll recall Attorney George Bonan from my office here helping. The thought is, I was just going to do a brief intro and then George will walk you through the nitty gritty of it, what we're thinking. But our, and also our sponsor and owner, David Ferris, is here with us as well. And we're happy to report to you that we think we can achieve what we hoped when we talked about last meeting. So with this revised concept plan, we think we're really killing three birds with one stone, in the sense that we're able to maintain a functioning office buildings parcel, there's a new 40B multifamily parcel, and you'll see there is what we've been working on the past couple of months, the opportunity to still have, if the permits can be issued, a donated 6.2 acre parcel to the town, to the Conservation Commission, just like folks had hoped for based on those 2019 site plan approvals for that parking garage that had been proposed. So you'll see as George walks you through it, you have lot 4A, which is intended to be the office buildings, 4B, which would be the 40B parcel, and then 4C, which would be, again, 6.2 acres donated. So we're really excited about this and we're thrilled that we can be able to, as I said, achieve all the goals that have been put before us. So with that said, I'll turn it over to George to get more into it.
Great, thank you, Brian. Before we begin, I think it might be a good idea to just do a quick recap of both a timeline of what's occurred and some of the hearings that we've, we've had and briefly discuss what's, what's got us to this point. I'd like to begin with just kind of going over the timeline briefly, and that is, we filed our application on November 1st, 2023, we had our first hearing on December 13th, 2023. From that date, the board has 180 days to close the hearing. Since then, we've extended the timeline twice. So just so we're all on the same page, right now, the date to close the hearing is August 28th, 2023. Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, 2024.
Yep.
Thank you. And then I'll be, briefly talk about what's occurred, again, to what's led us to this point. In mid-January, shortly after our first hearing, Town Council had identified an issue pertaining to the land donation that we're all very aware of right now, where 6.2 acres of land was conditioned in four 2019 permits that were issued to our predecessor. It was suggested to us at that point, the best way of dealing with it was apply for modifications to the 2019 permits so that the language referencing the land donation could be removed. We moved forward with that, we had a hearing with the planning board on April 29th, 2024, and the overall overwhelming sentiment in the room that day was that the, the planning board and the abutters that were there were in opposition of placing the building in its original location, which would be in the conditioned land donation area. Lot 4C, as you see it now, to the southern, more to the south of it. So given the, given the overwhelming sentiment of opposition, we asked the planning board to withdraw our applications for modification. They voted on that and they voted yes, and those applications were withdrawn. Shortly after, we had a hearing in front of this board on May 8th, where we asked to do the same thing, where we, we had a pending application for modification to a 2019 special permit that this board issued. We asked, in, due to the withdrawal of the planning board applications, we asked the ZBA to also withdraw our application. You voted on it and you voted yes. Also, during that hearing, we had decided to move forward with traffic peer review based on our original site plan. And you voted on that and you voted to do so, and we have received Vinesse and Associates' comments on the traffic engineering report, and our traffic engineer has submitted responses to those comments. About a couple of weeks later, we had an, we had one more hearing with the planning board on May 20th, 2024, in which we first showed or first proposed our alternative site plan, where the 40B building location was where you see it now in the lower level parking lot. The planning board and a group of abutters and the Chair of the Open Space, Open Space Preservation Committee were generally all in support of the relocation of the building. So they asked us to move forward with plans based on that concept plan, and that's what brings us here today. We have created a more detailed site plan, something a little more than a concept plan at this point, and we are going to present it to you right now.
To be clear, this plan you're seeing is incorporate of the feedback that we received from planning a couple of weeks ago, but this has not been brought back to them yet? We wanted to, we thought appropriate timing wise to share it with you all, and then we can have further discussions with them.
So first thing I'll do is I'll dive into the lot lines you see. There are three lots that are created, and I'll use this pointer, there we go, I don't want to blind anyone. This is the proposed lot 4A, and this would house the existing office building lot. Little to the south is proposed lot 4B, and this would be the 40B lot. And then, starting from this point, ending here, and being separated by the green line is proposed lot 4C, and this is, this is intended to be the 6.2 acre land donation, which will occur upon approval of this comprehensive permit.
And, you know, there's a few moving parts here, as George mentioned, we view it as all being part of one action, in the sense, you know, be one final hearing by this board in which the lots could be set, the comprehensive permit issued, the 2005 special permit modified, et cetera, all of those.
And that, just to be clear, the, the area that you're talking about in the green is 6.2 or acres?
Correct, yes. I will dive into something a little more technical, and that's access to the 40B parcel. This was brought up in the planning board, we, planning board hearing we last had. Chair Luttrell had, had not concerns, but asked how we would create access to it. So using this road, this, this way, private way, which comes from Route 9, you can't see it, but Route 9 East is right over here, will extend down to the southeast, southwest corner of the parcel, and then this is, this is where the lot line for the 40B parcel begins, lot 4B. This will be a two-way access going directly to and pouring out into the parking lot of the 40B parcel. And it will adhere to the dimensional standards required.
And just as a reminder, that existing access driveway, as it says, is existing, so that's what we intend by modifying the 2005 special permit to become shared, serving both lots.
Another concern that was raised was emergency vehicle access and having access to three sides of the building. In our original concept plan, the building was a little further north and there wasn't much room between the pond and the building. We've shifted the building further south to create a 20-foot accessway to the north of the building, and then a 24-foot accessway to the south of the building. In doing so, we had to re, we had to relocate the recirculating sand filter, which you can see very faintly right over there, and we relocated it just a little further south and carved a piece of lot 4A out, and it's, and I'll get into this right now, actually, it's a good segue. You can see, this is part of lot 4A, and if you follow this path around lot 4B, it, it connects once again to lot 4A. And we do this so that the recirculating sand filter is still part of the lot 4A and not part of the 40B parcel.
That's because the recirculating sand filter serves the office buildings, and that it will continue to do so after construction. And that's not a small project, it's a lot of the applicant to invest in moving such a system and kind of closing out one and building a new one, but the applicant's willing to do that to achieve this.
Next, as you can see, the wetlands that was brought up several times during our prior hearings is, will remain untouched and part of the land donation. And that brings us to what we'll be needing from the ZBA, and that is in short parking relief. In order to accommodate the 40B parcel and the existing office buildings, we will need to apply for a variance with the Zoning Board of Appeals for parking relief for the office buildings. Right now, as of today, there are 549 spots, parking spaces on the entire lot. We will designate, well, by, let me backtrack, by creating this building over here, we will eliminate 92 parking spaces. Bringing our total. Apologize.
While, while George is looking at the total, we drew the lot line in the way we did for lot 4B to make sure that it in and of itself has 1.7 spaces per unit of the structure, which is generally accepted as an appropriate ratio for a building like this. So it would be sufficiently parked in and of its own lot, then it would be the office buildings lot where relief would be requested.
As Brian just said, we will be designating 102 spots of the remaining 450, 457 spots to the 40B parcel, and that will leave the office building with 355 spots, parking spots, and we'll be seeking variants to accommodate that.
You said that's a net loss of 92 spots?
It's a net loss of 92 spots to the total original lot 4.
Okay.
Which will bring the amount of parking spots down to 457. 102 of those 457 spots will be designated to the 40B parcel.
Okay.
Creating a 1.7 space per unit parking ratio, which Brian said is widely accepted.
You want to talk about our staff's observations about actual usage?
Yes. Over the last week or so, we've observed, we've actually counted cars in the parking lot. As you know, it's completely office use at the moment, and we've counted cars on the entire site sometime between 10:00 and 11:00, and then again around 5:00. At its peak hours, which I would argue are between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m., there were no more at one time 109 parking spots. And it was more on average.
Sorry, could you just clarify, 109 cars parked?
I'm sorry, yes, 109 cars parked in the parking lot, I apologize. And obviously, that creates, that's creating an overabundance of remaining parking spots that we just don't need. After 5:00, it, the number significantly drops to in the twenties.
Well, I'm thinking of it, the way, there's a reason why the lot 4C lot line jogs south like it does around the proposed dog park and playground. You'll recognize those amenities for the 40B building from the previous plan that we submitted, and the idea is those would remain amenities. And although it's not depicted on the plan, the reason they're laid out like they are is because the septic system for the 40B building would be beneath those amenities, which is why you still see that square there.
Although not depicted on the site plan, we do also plan to add an addition or an additional parking garage right in front of the dog park, assuming engineering would allow it, which would be right over here.
And that would just be a further tenant amenity. With the build, the rectangle shown in red, we're able to provide approximately 10 garage spaces, and we think that there will be tenant demand for more than that number. And also in terms of the area, yes, if all the permits could be granted, it would be a donation of 6.2 acres, the area depicted in green, but also we think of the dog park and playground as being really community amenities adjacent to the conservation land more than just amenities that simply serve this one building.
Sorry, could you just back up on the, you talked about adding something in front of the dog park with?
10 garage spots.
Okay, all right.
You mean a garage with 10 spots?
Yes.
It's going to be a building.
A building, yeah.
Just the way the red is going to be a building.
Single level?
Yes. Okay. You know, inside parking, your garage doors going.
Yep.
Just a comment, and this is just for the board generally to consider in your zoning bylaw. The net result of the 500x spaces that the office building has, in my mind, was a carryover from the seventies and eighties of, you know, over designing, you know, parking lots. It's got nothing to do with Southborough, we could drive around, you know, anywhere you want to go around here, and we can go to shopping centers, and you're going to see a lot of vacant, you know, asphalt. This is just something, you know, your own common sense and, you know, and when I say vacant asphalt, I'm even talking about at the peak hours. Now, there's exceptions to that, you know, market basket, you know, they're a different, okay? But the stop and shops of the world, they're going to be empty, you know, so in any event.
This isn't retail.
Explain?
It's not going to be retail.
Right, and the other part of it is COVID. You know, and people are, in general, are not going in five days a week, and I think this is an office building and, you know, it's a good part of what's going on, and if you go to downtown Boston, you don't see the traffic that you see, and you'll never see it again, you know, before COVID. So the anomaly here is not an anomaly, and when George says to you, you know, we have 300, we have 500 and something spaces, but only 100 being used at the peak hour, I don't think that's a phenomenon that's particularly eccentric to this project. I think if we drove down, you know, Route 9 and looked at other office buildings, I'm guessing you're going to see the same thing. But we're going to continue to monitor, you know, throughout, you know, this hearing process, and, you know, we would.
What, what's the vacancy currently of the office building? Because that plays a lot into it, I mean, a lot of, a lot of parking is empty because there's a lot of vacancy right now, too.
Vacancies that give you more parking.
Correct. So 120 Turnpike, which is the building in the rear, is 95% occupied, and then 118 is between 30 and 40%. So collectively, they're about 65% occupied.
Which you correct, that's a good point, you know, about the vacancies.
I think that does it.
And that's pretty much the concept.
We'll open, we'll be open for questions, feedback.
Paul, you started off, so you want to go ahead?
Okay. So that's, that was my first question is, are there enough spots for the existing tenants? Because the whole, one of the whole issues at hand is the need for a tenant to have a structured parking that's not needed anymore. So at the moment and in the future, there is not any anticipated need for a tenant to have more parking.
No.
And if there was, that would be kind of like your problem, because, I mean, again, the previous owner was trying to lease up the building and saying, I'll build structured parking for you. So if that's not needed, that's, I guess, not going to be needed.
It was pre-COVID. It was 2019.
So I got like a, kind of a random question thought. The, the dog park, the playground, that takes up a lot of area. I understand you're saying the septic's below it, you know, so good use of all that. Is that, like, I know the last one or two times you brought it up, it actually seemed to be like kind of met with negativity in the room. Is that super needed for sales or marketing? Like, is there much to it? Does it, does it have any adverse effect on open space? Is it mostly just open space? It's like, I mean, playground, like an impervial surface that like, it's not going to, you're not going to like hot top it or whatever, it's just going to be gravel or something?
Yeah.
Like, do you need it?
I think.
If no one actually like cares for it, do you like, I mean, is it, is it necessary?
Well, the, the land is going to be cleared for the septic field.
Right, so, I mean, what if it's just open space or, you know?
I think of the two, there's going to be more interest in this day and age with, for a dog park than there would be for a playground, probably.
I, I just remember from like two meetings ago, when you brought up, oh, we're going to have a dog park, and I think like two people commented on the fact that they were like annoyed by it almost, and I was kind of, if that's the, you know, if that's kind of like the feeling or the feedback, like, skip it, I don't know.
We're open to that.
Yeah, I think you can have your consultant comment. I think providing a dog park has become, and, you know, I'm, you know, it's not my project, but it's become a kind of integral part of apartments, you know, in terms of whether you want to call it marketing or just, you know, what apartments need to effectively serve their occupants, but we can look into that.
That's another COVID knock on, right? Everybody got dogs and COVID, so you need more dog parks.
So the last question I have, and it's, I'm not super following the, so the green line around that's delineating the lot line for, I guess, 4B, and it ends up there in the right corner, where I'm not too sure it ends at, because you're saying you can still have access around to the pond from the open space, so that, I don't know what that like, like in the right, yeah, like where your point, like where, a little more to the right, like what does that actually?
This?
What does that tie into there? Is there a?
This, this is our property line right over here.
Right.
To our budding neighbors. So the green line that delineates the separation between lot 4B and lot 4C begins here, travels, travels around the recirculating sand filter, and then around the septic area, and then all the way to the western side of the parcel. And I'm, and I'm sorry if I'm not answering your question, I'm.
I think that his question is, how does it tie into the office park?
Or why does it tie in like that? Like, is it?
Under Title V, the area of the recirculating sand filter should be on the same parcel as the building it serves, which is the office building. And so through that.
That's, that's part of septic for the office building, yeah.
Through that panhandle, it remains contiguous with the office building's parcel.
I, I think it's confusing to me, too.
Yeah.
In this depiction, I think when we come in with a set of plans and a lot plan, with all that stuff removed, you'll be able, you'll be able to.
Like, we're talking a couple of feet, I don't think it makes a huge difference, but I just.
No, no, I think it's a reason.
Make sure it's like.
I think it's a reasonable.
Make sure it's like tied in properly or whatever, because I'm not, like, I'm not super following it.
To be clear, kind of have a point, the physical tie-in is going to remain, you know, something like this, office building across to recirculating sand filter, or, you know, to lines that run through here as part of the septic system. It would just be, to, to make this still work with the office buildings, it would be contiguous, this land through here.
So that's, again, like what you're saying, that's a legal requirement that they be, be part of the property.
Yes.
So it's not functionally doing anything, it's just a legal sort of.
It's part of geometrically, the office lot, and there's a lot of lines in this plan, but I'm convinced that when we come back in with the next iteration, and we'll just have a lot plan as one of the plans, that you'll be able, hopefully, to satisfy yourself, okay? That it is.
I'm not like unsatisfied.
No, no.
I was just kind of wondering.
No, but, but your wonderment is, I agree with your wonderment, because it's a little confusing for me right now, myself.
I kind of want to have something like off to have it like not be right or type things.
And to achieve this and to retain as much surface parking as possible, this does, as you'll note, have a slightly different building footprint, and the building is taller than previously proposed. It is six stories.
Not sure to come up.
Yep.
Okay. Good?
I'm good.
Jamie?
I don't know where to start, because I was going to talk about the six stories, but I think I'll start with the dog park and playground. So you're saying that would be community use as well as obviously the tenant use?
It seems, I think functionally, it will be there and.
Is there, because I'm not as familiar, like, would it be easily functional from the shared land at Breakneck Hill? Like, are there going to be like trees people have to jump over to get there, or can they kind of easily use it?
I believe part of the trail goes right through here today. So there's pedestrian access that close.
So if it's, my personal opinion is that if there, we ensure that there is reasonable pedestrian access and it's shared space, I like the idea of the dog park and the playground because I do think those are things that people want. This, the, my big hangup is the six stories, and, you know, we don't have, I don't think we have a six-story building in Southborough. And one thing I hear from a lot of people in the community is that we have so many buildings that exist, why aren't we using those to help with this housing crisis? And I'm hearing we have a building on the lot that's only 35% in use. So has there? So has there been a discussion of potentially using, I realize that would be different permits and different, you know, we'd have to ask for different things, but is that an option to have a shorter new building, but then use some of the existing office space and create it, treat it as residential with the permissions?
We could look at it, but again, the buildings each are occupied with office tenants today.
Oh, I, I understand that. But one is only 35%, right?
But are we going to make, you know, it's already kind of cut up in terms of how the tenant spaces are demised. And so how are we going to, are we only going to convert a third of one floor that happens to be vacant today to apartments?
I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something I've heard over and over. We have a lot of vacant, vacant properties, and why aren't we using those instead of still building all new, especially something at six stories high?
I think the answer, Town Council can agree or disagree with me, is that, you know, 40B is the process we're in right now.
Right.
And, you know, that creates a process to present us, you know, a plan for proposed If we took the office building that was 35% and then tried to create a 40B in there, I think from a mass housing standpoint, a regulatory standpoint, it is going to be extremely complicated, extremely, you know, complicated. Plus, we do have these permitted, you know, authorized office buildings, and they're, you know, they're 35%, or one of them is 35%. You know, our intention would be obviously to get the other 65% rented and used. So, you know, and it's not an easy conversion. I mean, you know, it, you know, to, to convert from offices to apartments or residentially, it's an expensive conversion.
I'll tell you one of the main conversion problems is like when you see like Marlboro, Worcester, you have town sewer, and we don't have town sewers, so then you get into a.
I didn't say it was easy.
Yeah.
Or that it wouldn't be a hurdle. I just was wondering if it was something that was thought of.
Like, the water capacity for an office building is not going to be the same as multiple, like two, so you get into like septic capacity and, because we can't, you know, we don't have a town sewer to connect it.
Right.
Or they don't have a town.
But if you're building 60 units regardless, you're still going to need that same amount of water.
Oh, in addition to, yeah. But if you were, so not doing that building.
I would say maybe you put 30 units, or you have like a regular three-story building or whatever, and then you put some units. I, I, I don't think it's easy. I know there'd be a lot of regulatory red tape, so I don't want you to think I think that. All I'm saying is that it's something I've heard over and over from townspeople. We have empty buildings and we have a housing crisis.
It would be pretty cool if it was like a vacant building.
Um, and then so when I hear it's only 35% full, and yeah, we hear some back-to-the-office stuff, but most people I know are not back to the office. Something to think about. But just, let's assume that's not happening, let's get back to the six.
Again, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think it's, I mean, the, the, you know, epicenter of what you're talking about is in Boston, in terms of their empty office space, and can they convert it to residential and how expensive that would, you know, and it's, it's a problem. You know, COVID created problems, and they're not going to get solved, you know, quickly. And as, as Mr. Dupontus indicated, at least in Boston, you don't have, you know, septic issues, you know, but you have, you know, economic conversion issue. So, I mean, yeah. In terms of the height of the building, and I know this is very preliminary, okay, we're going to come in with architectural plans to give you an idea of what the perspective looks like. So, you know, my experience is people hear stories, you know, four stories, five stories, six stories, and they get a perception in most suburban towns that the world has just ended. So we will give you, you know, architectural perspectives. We're at the bottom of the hill, we're not at the top of the hill. So potentially, and again, I, I'm not expecting you to make a decision tonight, you know, six stories at the bottom of the hill may be a lot less than three stories at the top of the hill, in terms of, you know, you know, consideration. And additionally, we're also in the front somewhat blocked off or, you know, by the existing office buildings, although they are only, you know, three stories. But we intend to come in with architectural perspectives to give you a better idea of what the, the six stories mean.
Yeah, and I think we need that. And I think someone had mentioned floating a balloon or something, so we can see that.
We can do that.
And I do, for the most part, I really appreciate this new plan. And I do think giving the 6.2 acres, which will also deal with some of that, blocking some of that building with some existing trees and such that will be there. I know it looks like a lot are going to be cleared for the dog, the dog park and playground, but I'm assuming there'll be something there the way the lot line is.
We can look at landscaping that, too.
Overall, I, I like it. The six stories gives me pause.
No, I, it was preliminary for me to expect.
Right.
That you're going to sign off tonight. I understand. But we're going to come in with architectural plans that are going to give you a perspective. And if you want a balloon, you know, to be put up, or a lull to be put up, or something to be put up to give you a perspective, you know, we can do that, or we will do that.
Yep, I think we need that.
All right.
I'm here. Hold on.
Okay.
I'm trying to, trying to manage everything as best as I can, so just bear with me.
You can come back if you want, Mike.
Yeah, if you could, that would be great.
Okay.
I'm just literally trying to, I'll be almost available in just a couple minutes.
Okay, great. Doug, do you want to go ahead then?
Yep, I can go. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
So, you know, some quick thoughts and comments. So first, I would agree that very much appreciate you guys moving it down off the hill and putting into the existing parking lot. I think that's honestly, that's, that's great, it's going in the right direction. I think it's great that proposed Lot 4C can be donated to the town. That's also great. I'm actually a fan of the dog park and the playground, particularly because it's going to be cleared. And the idea to have a place, you know, for dogs to be unleashed within a contained area, I think is good. I do think the Open Space Committee had a comment letter that suggested about, you know, working on a single point of access, you know, to the trail nearby. So I do think that'd be great, that it has access to the playground and the dog park. So, so I think that's generally good from my perspective. Did I have a quick question? How much square footage is in the two office buildings, 118 and 120? What's your total square footage?
Cumulatively, about 160,000 square feet.
Okay, and then how many spaces were you left with at the end of the day?
Uh, three. After everything goes through, it'd be 355 parking spaces.
So about two spaces per thousand square feet, right?
Yep, 2.1.
Is that the math? Okay, okay, yeah. Honestly, I don't, I don't have much concern about the number of spaces for the office building, especially because, you know, half your residents are going to be leaving during the day. And so there might be some overflow spaces that end up on the residential lot, or vice versa, at night. So, but I, just generally as a member, I don't, I don't really have a concern about the parking. I think that's sufficient. So the, the number of stories definitely, I would agree, gives a little bit of a pause. I mean, that is a five-story wood-framed building over a one-story concrete building. I think it'd be great if you guys could actually look at, you know, at least bringing it down to five stories. That means you'd be all wood-framed. And if you grow it, even if that means maybe you're down to 1.5 spaces per unit, at least from my opinion. But just would suggest if, you know, might be better to elongate the building and come down another story. Six stories is very high, and it's actually causing you guys some extra construction costs most likely on that first story. So that's just, you know, that'd be my comment really on the height, because that is a very tall building. But generally, I do think it's going in the right direction, and, you know, those are, I guess, those are my initial comments at this point.
Thanks, Doug. Doris?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, I don't know if I'm going to have a lot to add, but I firstly'd like to say I appreciate the, the new lot and the donation to the town and the rework of the plan. When I look at the 4C, it's raised in a different way. I understand why. We have the sand drainage rectangle on the, on the block, and we'll see it more in future meetings. It's just a jog, and it, it's hard to read, and I think we're all having some consensus. It's hard to read the jog or the, the lot line of what it's going to be. And so I can't conceptually, is that a half acre, all those jogs? Or could there have been a slight move of the dog park and the playground up, so it's not so many lines? I would have a hard time to know what I own and what I don't own. But I'm not stuck on it. I, it just conceptually looks odd in a lot. I'm for the dog park and the playground. It could be me, too, but it looks larger, and this is more towards land donation. It looks larger, and I know it's on top of the septic. Almost the, the building, and maybe I'm wrong in saying, but it's, it's large in relation to the building. And I'm just trying to get a more contiguous 4C lot line, not against the dog park. I think in the market today, you need both. I think we're going to have a lot of resistance, I, but I'm not opposed to six stories, even if you put a balloon up, is, is tall. And my thought on that, besides what Doug was saying on construction costs, save some construction costs, is less units. And that could get the height down. And maybe extending it a bit, and that may bring the, I think that brings the ratio of the parking up. Even though there seems to be ample parking, you're at 1.7. And having parked in my early days in apartment lots, if you had guests or visitors, there could be some, 1.7's height, but you can go to the other lots. So possibly, conceptually, bring down the units, bring down the height. But I like where it's going. I'm in agreement with Doug. I'm not super resistant on the height, but six is tall, and we'd get a few less units. There's no question about it. I don't, I think we're going to have a lot of difficulty bringing that in front of the town and the butters and going up six floors, even five floors, even four floors. As other proposals have come up, and that's double the maximum allowable height in town. Even if it sits back on the property, deep down, where you can maybe conceptually not see a floor, that still brings you to four floors. So I just appreciate the rework. It looks at great cost to rework this. I look forward to seeing us move forward on it.
Okay. Thanks, Doris.
Yep, that's my thoughts, Dave.
Mike, are you ready now?
Hold on one minute. I'm sorry for the delay. I just want to give you my full attention, and I'm just one minute away from being able to join and comment on this. Just to try to be safe, because I'm trying to manage boys' life and calendar.
Okay, well, Paul's, Paul's going to fill in that gap because he's got another question.
All right. I got more conceptual thoughts. The sand filter is part of Lot 4A, correct?
Correct.
So I think why I'm confused is the green line that is like the east-south and west part of that, I think should be black.
Yeah, you're correct.
That's why it doesn't line up, yeah.
You're correct.
Okay. Problem solved.
There you go. Mike, you, you ready yet or not yet?
And I'm colorblind, too, and I was able to go through that.
Well, you know, while, my, my thoughts, my comments on it, I mean, the first thing that I noticed was the six stories. And I said if, you know, we were concerned about four stories, six stories, it's certainly going to be an issue. I know, I consulted with Laura today, I mean, we know that Madison Place is four stories, right? So.
Can I ask you why?
Why what?
We've done a number of 40Bs in comparable, you know, residential communities at five and six stories.
Right. You want, I think Doris touched on it. She said that, that the code in town is three stories.
No, no, I.
Maximum.
No, no, I, the code in those other towns was, was three stories.
Right, but I'm, and, and part of it is, is me gauging, like what I said, is gauging the response we already got of people being concerned with, with the building height. And I, and, and by the, and I agree that you really need to do the architectural renderings. We need to, you know, do the balloon to see exactly what it's going to be. I'm just pointing out, that's, that's the first thing that jumps out at me.
Has that gone in front of public safety? Has that been embedded with?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean.
Like, we have a fire ladder that can put out a fire on the sixth story?
Well, I, my question wasn't to be argumentative. My question was that if we're going to produce housing in significant numbers, then the typical three, three-story limitation at virtually every townhouse, 30, 60, or give or take, just doesn't work when you apply it to the economics of building multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Okay. So the issue always becomes, and again, I'm not asking you for making a decision tonight, where is the five or six-story building going? If I was going to land this next to St. Mark's, hmm.
All right, yeah. The point's taken, yeah.
I can see people saying, hmm, that's not an appropriate place to land it, you know? If, well, I'm landing it in an area that we don't have a butters. And so again, it's only for your consideration.
Correct. I understand, and, and I'm not, I'm not raising it to be argumentative either. I'm just saying this is something that I'm sure is, is going to come up. And, and I, I figured that it would be, you know, an economic argument. I under, I understand that part. I also agree that if you're ever going to put one, you're going to put one where you have other industrial buildings. It, it does, it makes sense, I get it.
Or, or where you're, you're, you're not near anybody, and, you know, there's residential.
Yeah, and it, and it is about perspective. How does it look in that spot? In certain spots, you put it on top of a hill, it's going to look like a monstrous tower. You put it in a place where it's down a little bit, or the backdrop is, is elevated, that it doesn't, it doesn't look as bad. So we will, we will get to that point. I, I agree.
But a three-story building in, you know, a terrain that's elevated can be worse than a six-story building.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that's the case here either way.
Okay. Mike, are you ready now? You look ready.
I am. I'm so sorry for that. I actually finally have a little bit of coverage.
Okay.
So I hope everyone can hear me okay. Yeah, I really just echo a lot of what Doug had mentioned earlier. My questions about five versus six stories, you know, with respect to the lot. I really like the direction of where this is going, but I, I share some of those same concerns. I really, I didn't have any really expansive views, even though I kept everyone waiting for those. But I just wanted to be able to like fully engage with, with the panelists and the app com. But, you know, those, those are my concerns as well.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I mean, just again, to, you know, my, I'm, I'm, I think the board feels the way I feel, that I think it's very positive to see the move of the building, the 6.2 acres, you know? And I, I kind of understood where it was going with the, with the six floors. I think it's definitely a positive thing. I agree. I, I, I think it is a good spot for it, so. As far as, as far as going forward goes, I don't know that you need more from our board than the pulse of, which I think you're generally getting a, a.
Agreed.
Good feedback on.
So in that respect, our plan would be to go ahead and have our engineer, in addition to the work that architect will do in terms of showing elevation, have the engineer flesh out the additional site plan sheet. So go ahead and do grading and erosion control and other sheets based on this.
Okay. So before we sort of close out on the subject, I do have to make sure I allow boards and, and the public to.
I just wanted to tee that up about where we'd like to be headed.
Yeah.
And along those lines, we, with this lotting approach, we'd like to go ahead and have prepared a preliminary subdivision plan that is consistent with this. So you'll see that as well.
Okay. Okay.
I, I do agree that this is, this is a great step forward.
I do agree that this is a great step forward.
If, Paul, sorry, Paul, if you could just, yeah, thanks.
Is it Brian?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, I think a lot of progress has been made on the 6.2 acres, the conservation land. That's great. And I'm glad to see that that's going to be resolved. That was initially my primary concern, the impact on the conservation land. If you look at my memo here, I'll try and be brief. My main concern after that, the conservation land, is the height of the building. And the fact that there aren't any other six-story buildings in town, I agree with the board that residents aren't going to look kindly on that. I think it's a bad precedent. Even though it's not a legal precedent, when Park Central comes before you, if you approve a five or six-story building there, you won't be able to deny them a five or six-story building.
That's, that is not true at all.
Okay.
Yeah. So, no.
I don't agree. I was talking about impressions.
That's completely untrue.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
That's not a statement worth making.
Okay. Well, I take it back then. We do have a ladder truck. The, I don't know, I think you need a letter, you need comments from the fire chief.
Yeah, to be clear, they have to sign off on it, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that you want something before the board indicates to the developer that we think this is something that we're ready to go forward with. It's such a critical issue. The building height defends, defines the footprint and the size of the footprint. That's just my opinion.
Agreed. But just to assure you that that is part of the regular sign-off. They have, there's several boards that have to approve of this, so there's a lot to go through.
I understand. What I'm referring to is, I know the developer wants to go forward with detailed plans. I think it's perhaps unfair to the developer for him to go through that expense if it means he's going to have to enlarge the building or move the building or whatever. I think that's premature.
But again, that's the developer's decision to make.
Okay.
It's not for us to decide to tell the developer what to do or not to do. He's looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, but the developer is looking for a sense of what we're thinking here. And if they want to go forward and expend money on designing and developing, then that's their prerogative.
I understand. So anyway, I think the building height is fundamental to this whole project. The other thing in terms of the dog park and the septic system and playground, I think the developer needs to have his environmental engineer look and see what size he's going to need for his septic field and what kind of system he's going to need. The fact that those two areas are almost as big as the proposed building make it critical that that information be available so that a land area larger than what needs to be provided isn't shown and doesn't go forward. From the conservation land point of view, clear-cutting that area is still a significant impact on the conservation land. So one suggestion I would have, and I think one of the board members mentioned that, is moving the dog park, the playground, spreading it out, and so that it doesn't have such a large impact on the conservation land. What else? Subdivision plan, I'm very glad to hear that the developer is going to go forward with a preliminary subdivision plan. And this plan does show the three lots, which is definitely the way to go forward. As far as the subdivision, you know, I think that, and I won't, not try and speak for the board, but it seems to me that an easement or flexibility in terms of the subdivision is appropriate here, since the board and the developer are trying to work together here. So I think that the preliminary subdivision plan and what ends up being the subdivision plan seems like it can be worked out. And I guess, you know, that's pretty well it. And I appreciate what the developer has done in terms of moving forward. And I do think this is a good project. My initial reaction was, I just didn't think it was in the right location.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just one last thing. So I provided three plans at the end. What I was struggling with was where the actual conservation line was. So what I did is I overlaid it from, the garage plan actually shows where that conservation land lot line was going to be. And it's approximately 90 to 100 feet beyond the property line, which always confused me. So the second plan shows, superimposes that line on the proposed plan. I think it's very indicative of the issues. It shows that you could, in fact, move the dog park and the playground off of the conservation land and still have the 6.2 acres. It's a lot cleaner in terms of the confusion. And the last thing is, is that, you know, you have an approved location for a garage. I wonder why perhaps the new building couldn't be located there.
Okay.
Certainly up to the developer what he wants to do.
Yep.
Just a suggestion.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Me, Mela Traun, the chair of the planning board. As the proponent said, it was, we had a very positive meeting with the planning board and the proponent in the end of May, and appreciated this new plan. But just to be clear, it wasn't a hearing then, it was just a discussion item. So this still needs, the condition on our approved site plan from 2019 still needs to be modified because the modification was withdrawn. So that has not been accomplished. My other question is, they have an approved site plan for the office building in the parking spaces. Can they get a variance to reduce the parking spaces, or wouldn't that have to be a modification of the site plan?
I think that's what you stated, is that you'd need a modification because of the impact on the parking spaces. Isn't that correct? Or was that, did I write that down incorrectly?
If I may, Brian, I believe we'd be requesting a variance from this board for parking relief for the office.
Yeah. That's what you said, you'd be looking for relief. So, right.
And on the point of whether any of the 2019 actions would need to be modified, we talked about town council, with town council about this as recently as today. We think that this lot 4C as proposed would be consistent with each of those four decisions so that no modifications will be required.
Right. Okay. It's just, I think we were pretty clear in the last meeting, too, that that, those things, to wrap up that, those decisions, is really with the planning board. So, and as Mimi said, if you didn't have a hearing, I mean, I'm assuming, and I think we took out of the last meeting, that you were going to continue forward with the planning board to get those things resolved.
That's right.
We're seeking, we will be seeking a variance.
Yep.
To reduce the number of required parking spaces.
Right.
And George outlined, okay, that's not before the board, but we will...
Right, right, understood, right.
Okay. If that variance is granted, okay, it makes this project work. And in my mind, that's the only relief we need, you know.
Okay.
Together with the, the only relief we need, separate from the 40B permit and in addition to the modification of the driveway permit that we've already applied for.
Right.
We don't need to go back to anybody else and do anything else.
Well, again, at the last meeting where we discussed the 6.2, the donation, I think it was pretty clear, we said, that's something that you'll work out with the planning board. That's not in the ZBA's purview, right?
But I just want to be clear tonight that we've, this plan creates or allows...
Correct. I'm not saying it doesn't.
No, no. Okay. So if it does, then it's an empirical event. You know, here is your 6.2 acres, okay? Whether we need it to give it to you or not, we're giving it to you.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know...
But again, that board is the planning board. That's all I'm saying.
No, I appreciate that. But there's a permit, the permit was issued. We debated whether or not that requirement was applicable. For the purposes of moving forward and avoiding controversy, the developers come up with this plan.
Right.
And this plan satisfies the 6.2 acres. I can't do any more.
Agreed. Right.
Okay? And so if I satisfy the 6.2 acres, that's the only objection that was raised, that we were using the 6.2 acres. We're giving it, we're complying. So, you know, I don't, I don't mean to, you know, be argumentative, but I don't foresee and don't think it's fair to expect we're going to have an ongoing discussion with various boards as to whether or not they like what we're doing if we've done it and we've complied. That's all I'm saying.
So I would have to disagree because we have a recorded plan for an approved site plan, and this is not it. So it would need to be modified and re-recorded in order to move forward, my opinion. We have not heard anything other than that that condition needs to be modified from town council. We can reach back out to him, but we haven't heard anything different.
Do you want to weigh in on this?
My opinion is that we had a recorded plan for a site plan, and this is different from that. In order to keep things consistent, we would have to modify it to reflect this.
So Steve Chaplin, me, Teller, and Coste were town council. So I've reviewed both of the historical decisions, and they both require a 6.2 acre donation to the town on the southern side of the property. But there is not a specific 6.2 acre parcel that's drawn out on a plan.
There is.
And so the requirement is not that a specific 6.2 acres be donated. The condition is that 6.2 acres on the southern side of the property be donated. You know, I'm not an engineer, so, you know, for today, I have to take these folks at their word that it comes out to 6.2 acres, but it's certainly on the southern side of the parcel. So if they're, if they're 6.2, what they're saying is 6.2 is really 6.2. It is the opinion of town council that the condition is satisfied. If the condition is satisfied, it wouldn't have to be modified.
The parcel is shown on the site plan. To move on from this, we'll have further discussion. The planning board meets on Monday.
Okay.
I just have a question. Will the residents from the apartments be able to access that dog park and playground? It's up a hill and there's a retaining wall around it. Like, how will that be accessed?
Through the chair, yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I think, I'm going to, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm assuming that is for the residents. You're just concerned with how they get there?
Yeah, it's not showing any access.
Right. And, but, you know, I think we have to have a little patience. That's, this is not an engineering drawing, right? This is taking a PDF and just marking it up to make the work.
And my next question, will there be a peer review conducted?
Of what?
Of the plan.
We, yeah, we have, I mean, we've done the peer review for traffic. We will be doing civil, we'll be doing, you know, environmental water, stormwater. The normal, yeah, the normal...
So is the peer review for traffic available?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. That's actually the next thing we want to talk about.
And could the balloons be flown before the next meeting? So when we come back, we'll know what that, the building height looks like.
Depends on when the next meeting is.
Yeah, it does. And I don't know how the developer feels, but do you want the architectural drawings first, or do you want to do the balloon test first?
Look, I had a good feeling till 10 minutes ago. And I don't mean to be funny. Now I'm wondering, and the applicant's wondering where this is headed.
Well, I think...
With respect to this board, which we appreciate the positive feedback from, it's like, here we go again in terms of some of the feedback.
It's not a lot different than what you heard before, that there was concerns with the four floors, now it's six. But I don't think that, I don't think that, I don't think that means you can't continue forward.
I think we can speak to the balloon test when we know when the next date will be, which our plan would have been, again, until I started to wonder about how this was trending, we would immediately have the civil engineers proceed to flesh out those additional site plan sheets and do the preliminary subdivision plan. And hopefully have that finished by the end of this calendar month so that then the peer review by the civil engineers and others could be underway during the month of July.
Okay.
And we'd be back maybe, I can't remember the board's schedule for late July, but perhaps be back then for further substantive discussion.
Okay.
In my experience in town council, I think would agree with me, that the way the process works is for you to make an intelligent decision based on, you know, facts-based decision.
Yep.
You need to have all the data in front of you.
Correct.
And that's not guarantee that you're going to approve the plan per se that we submit. So this iterative discussion doesn't do anybody any good.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the iterative part?
Meaning that we go in and we don't give you any plans, but we just give you architectural plans. It's not the way it's done. You have...
Agreed. Right.
A full site plan, you know, in fairness to you and in fairness to the applicant, to deal with all the issues.
Yeah.
And then the board can decide, is there a legitimate, real reason why the height can't be over X? That's the way, that's a risk that we take.
Right.
As pointed out.
Okay.
And then, you know, there are certain standards that, you know, the applicant has to comply with and the board has to comply with. And that's always the rub, the difference of opinion, you know? We try to work it out. Okay?
Okay.
All right? So, you know, we understand the obligation that we have to satisfy the board that things work. And that's just a general paraphrase word I'm using. So we will come in, we will have full plans, they will be fully, you know, vetted by peer review.
Mm-hmm.
Substantively, your peer review will be asked about height issues, okay?
Right.
Comment on them.
Yep.
And you can consider that, you know, and as well as your own common sense and anything else that comes.
Okay. But, I mean, I don't think there's anything that any of the board members said tonight that would sort of tell you that we can't go forward like that, correct?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
No, absolutely not. So we, and we understand, as the member indicated, we go forward always, like any application, to some degree at our own risk.
Right.
You know, until you vote.
Right.
You know, you haven't voted tonight, and you've just...
Correct, we're not going to, right, right, right.
You haven't committed to do anything.
Right.
You just gave us a comment.
Okay.
I do want to address Mr. Carter's comment on precedent, because I do think it's important. But I also agree with what Paul was alluding to, is that just if we approve something for one space, doesn't necessarily mean it's automatic for another.
I think town council would agree with me that no such thing is...
Everything stands on its own merit.
Right.
You know, by definition, every piece of land is different.
100%. And also, you guys are, if it works out this way, you're gifting us, the town, 6.2 acres, and that's a scenario that's not always going to be the case potentially for another lot. So I think people in the audience who are concerned about that shouldn't be.
Okay.
So...
Go ahead, Doris.
I think I'm clear in my mind, I'm clear in my mind that town council, and I agree with town council, like, this, the modification's been met, doesn't go back to planning. Because my understanding is that 40Bs, not the intent, is not the board bounce, you know, bounce between the boards back and forth. So just so I get it clear, given my head of town council would say the condition's met, because they'd withdrawn their modification, there isn't a need to go back, just so, even if there were discussions, it just, so I just don't want that seen in my perspective as a hindrance to go forward.
Okay. Okay.
The question, just so I understand, the question's whether the applicant has to go back to the planning board to modify the 6.2 requirement?
Yes, the applicant had withdrawn their modification and then has now donated the land, or in the perspective of donating the land, so they've met the conditions, so they would not have to go back to the planning board.
Right, correct. So what we've reviewed is we've reviewed the planning board decision and the way the 6.2 acres is described, and then the plans that are attached to that decision that's recorded. And our opinion is that it's not in reference to a specific parcel and a specific drawn 6.2 acres.
Okay.
You know, if there's...
Got it, okay.
If there's another question that's raised regarding the decision, we're happy to look into that, but that's what we looked into for this evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. They're just... Okay, great. Thank you so much.
If you can be brief, please. What have you got?
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. The exercise that I did, not my job, okay? I'm a civil engineer. I did site plan design for four years, and I reviewed them for two years. So I was confused about what the property line was of the 6.2 acres. It wasn't shown on any of the plans, except for, look at the last plan, proposed conservation line, right in the middle of the drawing. So I would differ with the fact that there is no plan, because there is a plan that shows the boundary of the 6.2 acres. And what I went to the trouble was to add that plan, that line, to the proposed developer's plan, and so you can see that on there. And also, you see, it says 85, 732, 120.
So I'd like to say, we're dealing with markups, right? The applicant is committing 6.2 acres. As Town Council said, we're assuming they're doing it correctly. They will ultimately have to have a very defined plan that shows where the 6.2 acres are. Let's not get hung up on that, please.
All I'm saying is, you look at the last plan, it's there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so I would like to still go through the notes on traffic. So I don't know how you want to go about this. Your, our traffic consultant from Vanasse is here. Would you mind... What I'd... This is what I like to do, is, you know, he has observations, your traffic engineer had responses.
Correct.
Let's just, you know, I thought we would just go through them.
And that's fine, Chair. I think I did tell Lauren, I think it's still probably the right thing to do. If there's a substantive discussion that's needed, we would probably...
Okay.
We would like to wait for our traffic consultant to respond to those questions.
Okay.
But if you want to go through them and just air them out, and if we can give brief answers, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Whatever makes the most sense to you, Mr. Chairman, just to make it a productive meeting. By way of introduction, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanasse and Associates, and we were retained by the zoning board to conduct a review of the September 23 traffic impact study that was submitted for the project. I would also mention that as a part of our review, we do look at the site plan as it relates to parking, access, and circulation. So we do have comments as they relate to the site plan. We will also be looking at the revisions to the site plan that the applicant went through tonight, when that is submitted to the board. It may, I know you just had a discussion as it relates to that site plan. What I would mention, some of our comments obviously will not apply to the revised site plan. There are a number of comments that will still apply. We do not discuss height, because as it relates to traffic and transportation, it's not really an issue. The height determines the number of units, and that's what we would look at, but we don't comment relative to height, because it's not within our purview as it relates to it. What I would just mention by way of the site plan, as we've looked at it, are just a couple of things. I think first and foremost is the, we are going to offer comments as they relate to fire department access. The fire chief ultimately has the decision. As the applicant is looking at this plan, the new plan, the only things that I would mention, in addition to our comments on the original site plan, which you will see deal with circulation for where the moving van's going to park, how are you staging them within the project site? Because this relates to the parking discussion. How is that all going to work? And if parking spaces need to be removed to have a loading zone, that's going to translate over into the office parking that they're going to be asking for some belief on. So I'm just offering this by way of some guidance to the applicant as they submit these plans. As it relates to fire department access, and again, the fire chief has the ultimate say on it, what we do is we look at the fire code. So in looking at the plans in this new iteration, and the applicant's engineer may be aware of this, fire department apparatus cannot back up any further than 150 feet. If they have to back up more than 150 feet, there needs to be a turnaround provision. So as you look at the building and its location within the project site, and again, we would need to see the engineering on it, you have two drive aisles along the length of the building that are dead ends. So if the fire truck needs to get down to the end of those areas, they need to back up. So we just say that as we look at that plan, our comment's going to be, that distance cannot be more than 150 feet. If it is more than 150 feet, then they need to provide a turnaround area at the end of those backup aisles. So again, just from the applicant's perspective, as they go forward with the engineering, that's something that we're going to be commenting on. Lastly, as the circulation and how do you get to the building, which I knew that, know that they're going through, as we're reducing the amount of parking for the office building, that means the remaining spaces are going to be utilized. As you're looking at how people get to this building, what we really don't want to have is people backing up out of those parking spaces into the primary drive aisle. So some thought just needs to be put into, how is that going to function? Because again, just trying to head off some comments, as they go through the engineering and the plan, these are things that if they're not resolved, they're going to deal with, you know, may result in some significant changes to that site plan. So just, those things need to be thought through. We've offered some other comments, which I won't go through, but the applicant should just consider those, because they're going to be repeated as they relate to the new plan. So it's just good to think about those things. But I wanted to hit upon those kind of major items, because those will relate to building siting and circulation within the project site. So as it relates to the transportation assessment, our role as the peer reviewer is basically a couple items. But it's really to make sure that the study is conducted in accordance with industry standards. So as we're looking at the transportation analysis, we have standards that we follow as professionals, as transportation professionals. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation sets our standards. So it doesn't matter as to the size of the development proposal. When we're conducting the analyses, we have professional standards that we have to follow. And so the first thing we do is ensure that the document that is presented to you complies with those standards. In the case of this project, its access is on Route 9, which is a state highway under DOT jurisdiction. And so as we're looking at this analysis, it has to follow the Department of Transportation standards. We would require that that be done, or the study be done that way, even if it were not on Route 9. So that's the first level of analysis we look at. Is the methodology that is used, the data collection and the analysis, does it comply with those standards? The next thing we look at is the impact analysis. So is there predicting the impacts of this project and looking at it in relation to what we call the no-build condition? So if the project wasn't built, there's certain levels of traffic activity on the roadways that can occur, and then the project's going to add traffic to that level of activity, and it creates an impact. And what we look at is the magnitude of that impact, and then really determine a couple of things. Can access with those impacts be provided in a safe manner? Looking at a 40B project, efficient manner kind of goes away. It's really, can this site, as it's located, accommodate the additional traffic in a safe manner? And can access be provided to the project site in a safe manner? If this wasn't a 40B project, we would also be looking at operations. We don't want to create any undue delay. If there's additional delay, then we suggest that mitigation be provided to address the delay. So looking at the first part of compliance with accepted standards, we've offered a couple of comments of the applicant, and I know the applicant had submitted a response. I will address kind of my thoughts on their response, so that when the applicant can really, they can convey this back to the traffic engineer. My expectation is that there would be a revision to this response. When we undertake traffic analyses for projects, the first thing that we do is we need to conduct traffic counts. So we go out on roadways, we look at intersections, and we collect traffic count data. For residential projects, we're typically concerned with weekday time periods and primarily when people are going to work in the morning and coming home in the evening, so the peak periods on a weekday. So the applicant undertook traffic counts, and they focused on the driveway to the project site. So the 118, 120 Turnpike Road driveway with Route 9, because that's where the primary impact will be. The project itself is going to generate less than 30 peak hour trips. So it's one additional vehicle every two minutes during those peak hours that I talked about. So when we think about the traffic coming out of Route 9, it's right in, right out. So there's a very efficient traffic movement. So as it relates to the volume of traffic, we're comfortable with what they've studied, which is the access into the project site. When we're collecting traffic count data, what we're required to do is we're required to look at what's known as average month condition. So if we were to do a traffic count, let's say in January, the traffic counts are going to be below average month condition. So if we look at counts in January compared to June, like right now, traffic counts in June are going to be probably 5% to 6% higher than they would be in January. So we don't want to assess impacts of a project under low conditions. We also want to not necessarily look at them under peak conditions, so summertime conditions. So the state requires that we look at an average month condition, and the state publishes data for us so that we can look at traffic counts on roadways and make adjustments, so that we're looking at average month conditions. The other thing that the state had done, and this is no longer done in practice, is we were applying COVID adjustments. So we were accounting for the fact that traffic volumes during the COVID time period, there was this time period when traffic volumes were much lower than they were in 2019. So there was an adjustment process that was applied to those traffic counts. That is no longer the case. We've kind of accepted the condition that we're in kind of, you know, the cliche of the new normal. So what the Department of Transportation basically said, and this was done prior to the preparation of this traffic study, it said COVID adjustments are no longer to be applied to any traffic counts that are conducted after March of 2022. The traffic counts that were collected as a part of this project were collected in September of 2023. So the engineering directive that was issued by the Department of Transportation says, you do not adjust the traffic counts. We're going to leave them the way they are. Now, the caveat to that is that if you're in an area where there's predominantly office uses, you are required to apply an adjustment. And I'm emphasizing that, because what you heard from the applicant tonight, there's two office buildings of about a little over 160,000 square feet of space on this site. So therefore, in applying an adjustment to the traffic counts, it's actually, is required. What we've indicated is kind of a baseline comment in our, in the peer review, is number one, September traffic volumes are above average. Standard practice is, if traffic counts are above average, you do not, you do not adjust them down. You basically say, okay, we're using September traffic counts. They're about 5% above average. We're not going to touch them. We're not going to manipulate that data. We're going to leave it alone. So we've said to the applicant is, don't adjust the raw traffic count data, because that's not what's done in conducting transportation analyses if the traffic counts are above average. The second thing that we've said is, COVID adjustments are no longer applicable on state highways, or again, since the March 2022 traffic counts, and that was published by Department of Transportation in May of 2022. However, this site has two office buildings. And when we look at the traffic counts coming in and out of this driveway, what you'll see is during the morning peak hour, so when everyone's coming into the office building, the driveway had 25 vehicles going in and out. The same number on a Saturday, on a weekday evening, 25 vehicles. So what that says is exactly what the applicant has said, which is that we have vacant space in those office buildings. What we ask the applicant's traffic engineer to do is account for the vacancy of those office buildings and add that traffic back into the traffic numbers, so that when you're looking, and when we're looking at the impacts of this project, it accounts for the fact that the applicant desires to reoccupy that space, re-tenant that space, so that what we're looking at is the impacts of this project on top of fully occupied office buildings, because you're asked, you're being asked to do the same thing as it relates to parking. And there were some very good questions about, even with the applicant's observations on parking, if we have an office building that's 30% vacant, then those observations need to be grossed up, because it's not a true perspective of what is happening on there. That's one of the baseline comments that we had in our transportation analysis. The applicant's response as it relates to those baseline numbers is basically, they disagree, and they're not going to adjust the numbers. And so again, I'm going to just kind of leave it at that. I'm not even going to review this response, because I'd suggest that the applicant's team go back and take a look at these responses. And I know it was kind of, you wanted to get something in before the meeting, but I think a lot more thought needs to be put into this. Flowing from that initial comment, when we're undertaking our analysis, the Department of Transportation standards is that for any document that's submitted to this town, what should be looked at is a seven-year planning horizon. And the seven-year planning horizon is from the date that that traffic study is submitted to the board, not the date that it's published. The applicant submitted a traffic study that has a five-year horizon. That is not what's used in Massachusetts. So what we've said to the applicant is, you need to look at a seven-year planning horizon. So let's start with good baseline conditions. The standard is seven years in the future. They are to work with the town to understand what projects may be adding traffic to Route 9, so that then they adjust their traffic counts for seven years of growth, plus any projects that are in the area, and then assess the impacts of the project with and without that seven-year horizon numbers. So we've asked the applicant to undertake that analysis. Their response is, they're not going to do that. So, you know, they respectfully disagree. That's not DOT standards, okay? So we, again, we would ask the applicant to go back and revisit the response of that comment. The other thing as it relates to the project site, the sight lines of the driveway, speaking about safety, are, you know, it's relatively level and flat. There's no sight distance issues out there. 100% of the traffic to this project, because there's a median along Route 9, has to use the traffic signals on either side to either go through or reverse direction. Both of those intersections on either side that have the traffic signals are state-designated high-crash locations. So the number of crashes that are happening at those intersections and the severity of those crashes is disproportionate to either the volume that's going through that, those intersections, or the type of crashes, so the severity. Is there more property damage or more personal injury crashes versus property damage crashes? We have not asked the applicant to study how the project impacts those intersections, because it's our opinion, and we agree with their traffic engineer, that the project doesn't add enough traffic to suggest that they should be undertaking improvements. What we have asked the applicant to do is look at what's happening for the crashes at those intersections and provide some feedback to the board, so that you have some information as what's really going on down there. That information is available through the Department of Transportation. It's a simple effort to go on the website, to obtain the information, look at the crashes, and provide some feedback. So what we've asked the applicant to do is to undertake that analysis and provide that to the board. And again, we're not suggesting that they reconstruct these intersections or make improvements, but that they look at that and provide some feedback to the board. And again, the response is, that's not warranted. So again, that's a high-level overview. We've also suggested to the applicant that we know there's not public transportation service to the site, but in all multifamily residential projects, and I've heard the applicant's representative mention that they've worked on similar projects, we always request that there's a transportation demand management program. All that really is, it's not requiring that they provide bus services or anything like that to the project site, but what it is asking is that the applicant and the management team just provides information to the residents. It can be as a part of the website information or just in the management office that basically says, here's available public transportation resources in the area, and how you get to those resources, what the schedules may be. It may not reduce traffic at this project site, but it does help with regional traffic volumes. So again, it's not a cost-related item, but it's good transportation planning practices. So we again suggest that the applicant consider that. So, you know, I'll defer to the applicant, but I would suggest at this point that I do not review the response that was submitted, and I wait for a new response, or I can respond to it. But I'm going to basically reiterate what I just said tonight, which is, this is not, it's not an acceptable response to me, and it needs to be revisited. This is not a lot of work.
I had to wait for a new response.
Okay. So I'm just going to consider this as received, but I'm going to table it, and I will not review it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has now, or I can wait till later this evening?
I think it probably makes sense to have the more...
I think it probably makes sense to have the more substantive discussion, like you said, with your traffic engineer present. So I, I thank you for, for coming tonight and offering up. Okay. I think as far as this, actually, the, I think one thing maybe Jay brought up was the, the, the date, right? I mean, knowing that you've got, we're saying what you have for a plan, you're saying you can continue to develop, but it obviously impacts the end date, right? So are we going to be, are we going to push that out again? Because if you have to go off and now come up with plans, obviously that, that starts pushing everything back.
We'd rather not push the date back yet.
Yeah, okay. So what does that mean? Does that mean when you have a, at the next hearing, maybe we have a better idea, or?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know. That's fine with me. If, if, by that, you just mean you, you think, you obviously express some concern about when we could have the next one, right?
That's the issue.
Okay. And then maybe we'll have a better idea then. Okay. So in that case, sorry.
Two things, we have a hand raised, and I think Steve has.
Okay.
Just my, my question would be, what is the anticipated timeframe for getting a full plan set together? Because I think we're not much more than 60 days off of the deadline. It just, it seems a little ambitious.
We think by the end of June, we could have the flushed-out plan sheets in, is our goal.
So then it's just a matter of getting back before the board and agreeing on what that extension's going to be, because I, I, I hear your concerns. It's, that's not that far away.
And, and I, and I don't think by saying end of June for plans, that we're saying end of June to resume the discussion here.
Right, right.
It's more, that would be a time at which we could get the updated sheets to your civil peer reviewer and others.
Okay.
Which may, I, it'd be great if it could lead to a discussion in later July.
Okay.
End of July.
I just point out that then you're, then you're right up against it. I mean, you're less than 30, 30 days away from the deadline, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty tight timeframe.
Sitting here now, I don't know if we need one month, or two, or three beyond August 28th. But being, I guess, all I'm saying is, it's not a no, it's a, it's a not yet. In terms of our.
Okay.
Extending.
All right.
Yeah, we can't, we can't make, we can't make you guys agree to an extension. I'm just.
No.
Raising it as a practical concern.
But on the other hand, we are not going to put ourselves in a position where the board can, you know, turn the application down for insufficient information. Okay? You know, so I think what we're just saying is, we want to see how it plays out in terms of submitting a set of plans, and then what peer review says to the board as to when they can comment on it. I don't know the answer to that yet.
Yeah. I mean, would you consider a shorter extension now, and a longer one later, or?
Yeah, I'd recommend that. That's going to make the board comfortable.
I, I, I kind of agree with town council. I mean, if we're meeting in late July, and you, our current date is in August, it's.
I, I do follow what, what they're saying, though, that maybe after the next meeting, they'll know.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not saying let's push it out, you know, three months. I'm saying we, you know, can we at least shift it for?
We made, why don't we just agree on an extension, and look at the calendar to the end of September, extending it a month?
I think that doesn't mean you can't extend it further after, after that.
Right.
No, we know we can, but I'm just saying right now, to give the board some comfort. And I think I.
I agree with, I agree with you, counsel.
The moon and stars tells me we're not going to be done by.
Yeah.
The end of August.
I, I agree with you.
That, that's all I'm looking for. If we just give.
If you could just pick a, a date that, you know, in the end of September, we can confirm it. We can give it to you tonight and confirm it in writing, you know, tomorrow. You know, copy of the town file.
Yes, yeah.
Somebody have a date, number?
We have our regular scheduled meeting for September 18th, if you wanted to keep it that.
Okay. I mean, that, I, to me, that would be, that would be helpful. Yeah.
So, you know, that's a reasonable place.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll submit confirmation, you know, of the extension tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
And the board has to, the board has to accept it and file it.
Correct.
We, you said we had a hand raised?
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everybody's thanking everybody.
Okay, Alan, you should be able to speak.
Great. Thanks very much. Alan Balmiak, Five Boswell Lane in Southborough. I actually am a former traffic and transportation engineer for about nine years, and I've actually worked with Jeffrey. Good, good to hear you. I only have one comment, but really, I support all the comments that Jeffrey made. I've been in his capacity before, both in terms of peer review and of actually offering traffic studies. One thing I just want to ask, and I didn't check, I didn't get a chance to check the packet, is the traffic, is the peer review analysis that, that Vanessa did, is that available for download from the South Borough site to take a look at?
Yes, it's on the website.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mitch. That's all I have. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
I have another hand up.
Okay.
You should be able to speak.
Hi, nice to meet you guys. I know 4th of July is around the corner, and I love the fireworks. And it's nice to see a lot of people walking by to see the beautiful lights. And it is also nice to go swimming. And I like going to the park.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not sure you're dialed into the right meeting. What, what exactly are you asking about?
I'm talking about like, I like Joe Biden, the president.
No, no, no. I'm sorry. This is.
Nope. We're good.
Okay. Do we, do we, we don't have any other hands up, do we?
That's so weird.
I have, I have no explanation whatsoever for that.
Okay.
I don't know if it was real.
Do we have any other hands up?
No other hands up, no.
Okay. Okay. All right. I apologize if it hasn't been quite as efficient maybe as you would like, but I think we're, we're at a point where we've discussed what we need to discuss tonight. We knew we weren't going to, you know, we can't go, although I appreciate all the traffic input, like, we can't really resolve that. I do appreciate, and I think the board appreciates, what you've done with the altered plans. So I think we just need to choose the next hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And you, now, just to reiterate, you said, Mr. Carr, by the end of June, you thought you would have something with substantial. So in that, you're, you're saying you think sometime in July would work?
What I'm thinking about is sort of end of June, plus however many weeks a peer reviewer would like. So if that, if there could be civil feedback, say three weeks of July, and then we're headed toward a board regularly scheduled meeting date in late July, that'd be great.
Okay.
I am away till July 29th, but I can try and call in, depending on the day.
Okay.
It needs to be earlier than that.
I would think a meeting in the latter part of July.
Would be as interesting.
The latter part of July? Yeah. Okay.
I was thinking of July 24th, for example, is a Wednesday.
What's our next meeting?
So our meeting in July is on the 17th. I'm not sure if that would give peer review enough time, because we have to get the plans and give them the go-ahead.
Yeah.
And then they need like three weeks.
That seems like it's a little tight.
You're not going to, if the plans come in, and if they do, you're not going to get peer review in two weeks.
Do we have anything on the agenda for the 17th?
Yeah, we have a regular application and a Park Central update.
Yeah. We're not adding to that agenda. So.
How about July 31st?
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's for May.
Okay.
You have to remember also for peer review, there's a, you know, holiday in the beginning of.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right. So it's, it's, it's kind of a challenging time of the year in, in some regards. Okay, so we're good with the 31st? You're good with the 31st?
We would just ask if, if it pleases the board that the civil reviewer, for example, be ready to receive the plan and start looking at it in early July.
Yeah. I mean, we, we already have.
Yeah, so I'm just finalizing the contracts, so hopefully we should be ready to hit the ground running.
Yeah, I think.
Do you have people lined up now?
Correct.
Yep.
We've got it teed up. We've just, we've got to be able to give them something, obviously. So.
While we're together, who is lined up, if I may ask?
Land Design Collaborative, and then we have Lucas Environmental for Wetlands.
Been a while, I forgot.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. All right. We can't, we can't close the meeting, so.
You have to make a vote to continue, man.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a vote to continue the meeting until the 31st of July.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, is there, is there a time on that meeting?
Probably 7:00.
7:00.
Yeah. Well, will, do you anticipate there to be anyone else on the agenda that night?
No, because this is.
This will be the only thing. Because I say sometimes if there's someone else, do this at like 7:15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No one else, so 7:00.
All right. We've got a motion to, to continue to July 31st. It's 7:00 PM. We have a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Actually, Doug voting, I don't know. Doris?
Aye.
All right. William's aye. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to accept the extension, or is that just a formality thingy?
Yeah, that's a good question. Do we need to make a motion for the extension?
Not sure that it's a legal requirement, but it doesn't hurt.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's extension of the timeframe till whatever that was in September.
September 18th.
September 18th.
Yep. We did say September 18th, yeah.
You said end of September, so.
Yes.
Oh, was it September?
Yeah, we found an accident.
Yeah, I think it's our regularly, our regularly scheduled meeting in September.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to extend to September 18th, made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Okay. And William's aye.
And that has to be, that has to be written to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's on that.
Yeah, yep. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
With the, with, in, in, consistent with the last caller, when you fly the balloons, can they be festive and colorful?
We will.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Yeah, like, like Sonic the Hedgehog.
Make sure it's flying, yeah, make sure they stay upright.
Okay. So we have, the only other items we have on the agenda for the evening are the approval of meeting minutes from the last two meetings.
Last two, yep.
So.
Can I sign out? It's 5:00 in the morning here.
Are you, do you have any issues with meeting minutes, Doris, or no?
No, I, I don't. And I have an early flight I got to get to tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Doris. I'm, I'm just going to share with, with everybody on the board. I looked through them, and I had one minor update for Laura, but otherwise, they looked good to me. I don't know, does anybody else have any, anything to add or comment on them when it comes to the minutes?
I may have fumbled on one of the meetings, so I can't comment on that one directly.
Oh. Which one was that?
One of them.
I don't remember.
We have, we have May 8th is one, and that's actually the second one.
So, yeah, Paul was not here for May 8th, so let's do April 24th.
April 24th?
Mm-hmm.
Paul was here?
Everybody was here.
Everybody's here, okay.
That was delightful, yes.
Any, any, does anybody have any comments on the April 24th minutes?
No.
If, if there's none, then.
I will make a motion to accept those April 24th minutes as written.
Second.
Okay. Motion to accept the April 24th minutes as written, has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Doris is no longer with us.
No, Doris jumped off.
I, and I got, I got Doug, right?
She said, she said she didn't have any.
Yeah, yeah. Count her as an aye. Okay.
Can we do that?
No, not really.
I'll just, I'll note that she left.
You have a, you have a majority of a quorum unanimously in support. The motion, the motion passes.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
She abstained from.
We can't put her in as an aye.
We cannot vote by proxy for members that have.
No, no. So then the, the second one, the May 8th minutes.
May 8th. Paul will have to abstain.
Although they look great, I'll abstain, yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else remaining have any concerns with the May 8th minutes? Take a motion, Jamie?
I make a motion to accept the May 8th minutes as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion has been made to accept the May 8th minutes as written. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
William's aye. And, yeah, that's all we've got. Okay. And that was the last item on the agenda, correct?
Unless, so just as a.
Just what, yeah, what do, what do we have?
Quick update. June 26th is our next meeting here. We have, what do we have? We have two applications. Each one is special permit and variance. And then we have the initial public hearing for 250 turnpike.
Yep.
The 40B.
Right. That's all. All on the 26th.
Really fun.
Yeah.
I won't be here, but.
That's the one you won't be here for.
I will watch it.
Okay. All right.
Doris will not be here on the 26th either.
I get all the addresses mixed up. What's 250? Which one is that?
250 is the one that's up on the hill with the yellow storage unit.
It's behind the B.
Oh, behind the B. Oh, okay. The, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay. And then after that is July 17th. We have one regular special permit application, and then the Park Central update.
And the regular thing is first?
The regular thing is first, so you guys, if you want to show up for that, and then you guys can leave.
I won't be here.